I don't.
All right, I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville for Tuesday, November 27, 2018, and we'll start with roll call.
Barbara Doss.
Here.
Ken Killian.
Here.
Eileen Nichols.
Here.
Don Francis excused.
Sina Sharp.
Here.
Robin Klein.
Here.
Barb Stockhausen.
Yes.
We have a couple of public hearings on the agenda this evening. The first is a 2019 budget hearing, Resolution 1824, appropriating the necessary funds for the operation and administration of the City of Platteville for the year 2019. And the second resolution for the budget hearing is Resolution 1825, authorizing the salaries and rates of pay of the officers and permanent employees excluding union personnel, library personnel, and city manager for the year 2019. And we'll start with staff presentation. And for those of you in our audience, and welcome to all UWP students who like to see you here this evening, well, we are having a presentation and the screen is in the back of the room, so if you'd like to turn around and take a look at that.
I don't know what it is about my budgets, but I always manage to get a big crowd right before the approval.
Future taxpayers.
Yes. What's up?
Future taxpayers.
Yes. So just as a reminder, you know, we're going to go through the proposed budget tonight for the final vote, but we have been at this for a long time, and this is really the culmination of a series of meetings that we've had, starting in late August. And there are a lot, a lot of work goes into the budget process, and so I have to call out the work of our administration director and our finance division manager, as well as all the department heads for the tremendous effort that they put into this process. So we talk about what a sustainable budget is whenever we talk about our budget, and given our audience, I might just go through it, actually, in some detail. So when we think of sustainability from a budget perspective, there are two lenses we can think about it from. One is the bond raider. Those are the folks that evaluate us for the purpose of lending us money. Our bond raider wants to see that the city has good financial policies, that we are not unduly burdened by debt, and that we have a reasonable path to pay off our debt, that there's enough revenue to cover our ongoing expenses, that there's good predictability in our ability to capture revenue, which is really sort of the condition of our local economy, and that the city has sufficient cash reserves. From the city manager's perspective, we have a few additional things that we also think about, one being that the city's infrastructure is being maintained in a manner that will maximize its life expectancy, that ongoing funding exists to address the predictable replacement of equipment and repair of buildings, that debt is reserved for large capital projects that have an extended life, that we have some contingency funds within our budget to be able to deal with unexpected expenses or opportunities that come our way, and that the city is able to pay a market competitive page, wage, so that we can attract the talent that we need to be successful as an organization. So as we talk about, as we've talked about the last three years, you know, like every municipality, we face a lot of difficult trade-offs. We are always trying to balance the compensation and benefits for our employees, and because we're a service organization, the majority of our budget goes towards wages and benefits. So if this pie were actually drawn to scale, it would look very different, and the compensation and benefit portion of that pie would be much larger. We have a lot of streets, buildings, and equipment that we're responsible for maintaining and services that we provide with respect to those items. And then lastly, we always try and carve out a small piece of our pie for new initiatives that we want to do to advance our community. You know, we, we want to be relevant in terms of attracting the next generation of Platteville residents, as well as businesses to our community. So in terms of the tax revenue distribution, this combines both the general fund, our debt service, as well as our TIF or TID districts, tax increment districts. And I think one of the things that's interesting about this slide is that less than 50% of the revenue that we collect through taxes actually goes to the general fund that provides the typical services that we think of with respect to the city. And the bulk of the budget is spent on either debt service or repaying our debt at just over 20%, and/or largely paying for infrastructure improvements that have been made in those tax increment districts. We've talked about, a lot about debt as a community, and this slide just shows our debt capacity, debt capacity, which is the shaded area. The shaded area represents, per the state's formula, how much debt the city could legally carry, and the, the orange bars actually represent our existing debt levels. So we are well below the state's, the number that the state has given us for the amount of debt that we can carry, but we also have our own internal cap, and we are at about 89% of the internal cap that we have set with respect to our debt load. And our debt load is relatively, has flattened, so we aren't adding new debt at this point. This chart shows our levy-supported debt payments, and so this is the amount that, of tax support that's going towards our debt service. And so if you look at this, one of the things that's notable is that between 2018, which is the second bar, and the third bar, which is 2019, you see a significant jump in our debt payment, and so that's something that is reflected then in the 2019 budget. And this shows our general obligation debt payment, so this is both our levy-supported debt service, as well as our TID districts. And here you can see that, again, what we've talked about, it's not so much the debt that we carry, but we have some challenges with respect to how that debt is structured, and depending on the year, we're going to see increasing payments, although to some degree that could be mitigated by the performance of our TID districts, in particular, TID district number six. So with respect to the 2019 proposed budget, we started this process with a goal setting, we had two goal-setting sessions, and during that goal, those goal-setting sessions, the council had identified four areas that we wanted to focus on, and three of these were themes that had carried forward from our previous strategic plan. The ones that had carried forward were marketing, connections, and housing. The new area that we identified was infrastructure, which is appropriate, given the class that is here tonight. And then you can see some of the preliminary goals that we had talked about as part of the goal-setting process. And so we use that goal-setting process then to help guide us as we approach the budget planning process. So in terms of the general fund, when you look at the overall trends, there were three major levers, I think, with respect to the budget this year. One was those increasing debt payments that we talked about, and the amount of about $260,000. We had a decrease in transportation aid in our municipal services payment, and that was about $135,000. So those were two really big numbers that negatively impacted us this year, and I highlighted those in red because those are, to some degree, outside of our control. They were, they were predestined. The next item, which I would consider to be the third major lover in our budget, was just an adjustment to compensation for our employees, and so this budget includes a 2% adjustment to salary ranges, but no steps, except for those employees that are covered under a union contract or where we had previously committed steps. Outside of that, we made modest increases in utilities, fuel, and building maintenance charges. We decreased expenses in the area of stormwater and GIS. We did maintain some contingency funds, although with the last adjustments that you see summarized since you previously saw this budget, we've actually further reduced the contingency funds. I would note that this budget does not increase any previously reduced areas, areas that were impacted by the '17 and '18 budgets, the museum, senior center, street division, and so forth. So in terms of fund revenues by source, actually, I may have gotten this slide in the, not the best place, but you can see that when we're looking at our budget, about 33% of it is coming from property taxes, that we are heavily reliant on support from the state through various state aids, and that's about 46% of our budget. Public service charges for service is about 7%. When we look at our general fund expenses by source, the biggest area that the expenses are going towards is public safety at close to 39%. The next highest would be public works at just over 19%, and then general government at 15%. So in terms of the overall budget, you can see the percentage changes in each of the categories. As I noted before, we had a significant increase in the debt service, resulting in a 21% difference, and as a result of that, we really had to lower the amount from our levy that was going to support our CIP, your capital improvement plan, by almost half. The total percent change in the overall city budget is 4.5%. And so then, to focus just a little bit more on the capital improvement plan, our proposed capital improvement plan includes airport master plan, which will be funded through the state, airport fuel farm, which will also be funded through the state in combination, I should say both of these, mostly funded by the state, but there is probably also some airport revenues that will go into that. Business highway 151 improvements, this is just the design phase of the changes that you're familiar with, that would convert business highway 151 from a four-lane road to a three-lane road. So for the design phase, the split is $15,000 for the tax levy, with the remainder being paid for by the state. Two street reconstruction projects, which will be funded by debt, the Camp Street sidewalk connection, City Hall Phase 1, and City Hall Phase 2, just design, and then museum projects. And I do think that this is consistent with our previous budgets and what the council has asked us in terms of really leveraging outside resources to be able to get things done. This proposed plan is also consistent with the idea that we're not going to take on more debt than what is being retired in that year. So sensitive. All right. So with respect to the City Hall plan, and if you were to look at this, you've since seen more up-to-date schematics than what are in this PowerPoint, so the phasing isn't correct, but generally, what will happen, this first slide looks at the first floor, the blue area is the current city manager's office. Next year, we would do both the HVAC work and the space use remodel in that area. In addition, we would do the HVAC work on the second floor. In 2020, we would complete the space use portion on the second floor, and then in 2021, we would complete what we call First Floor North, which is taking the current finance area and converting it into a conference room, and then the housing office. So this is intended to be a three-year project, and we've spread the costs over three years to make it feasible without taking on debt. Also, in the capital improvement plan, we have some equipment purchases, a 2.5-ton plow truck, pavement router, mower, four-wheel-drive truck with a plow, and a taxi vehicle. And then monies that will go towards sidewalk repair, street overlays. I would note that the street overlays are paid for through the wheel tax, highway striping, and then the stream bank restoration project, which is being largely funded by a DNR grant, and the UWP is also participating in that project. So again, in terms of the overall funding, we've got close to a $3 million slate of capital improvements, $196,000 is coming from the tax levy, $388,000 from our unassigned fund balance, we'll borrow just close to $1.1 million, and then we have about $1.2 million coming from other sources, primarily grants. This budget does allow us to maintain our policy of 20% in our unassigned fund balance, and when it's all said, is all said and done, our unassigned balance will be at 26.7% of our general fund budgeted expenditures. Our CIP does rely on two one-time sources of funding, one being the former, the sale of our former senior center property, which has now been completed. $101,000 of that went into this year's capital improvement plan. The remaining $50,000, we've set in a city, in a city's trust account, that will be designated specifically for something related to seniors. The other one-time source of funding was the ambulance replacement account, which is no longer needed now that the service has transitioned to Southwest Health. So I think, one question that often comes up when we're talking about our capital items is how can you have money to spend on all these capital items when you can't fund something that I particularly love, you can't fully fund the museum, or you can't fully fund the senior center? And the reason for that is that we really need ongoing funding sources to fund ongoing expenses. So I think of this as being similar to if you won a lottery, a $1,000 lottery ticket, and you happen to win, you don't go out and buy a house, because you might be able to make the first house payment, but you wouldn't be able to make any of the subsequent house payments. So ongoing expenses need ongoing revenue sources. One-time funding sources, such as our unassigned fund balance, though, are excellent resources for our capital improvement plan, since those are one-time expenditures. So in terms of the impact on taxes, we will actually see our mill rate drop in 2018. This is largely as a result of the revaluation process that was completed this year, so you see it dropping from 8.133 to 7.735. So if properties, if a property owner's value stayed the same, their taxes would, the city's portion of their taxes would decrease. If, if their value went up by the average percentage in terms of residential property, they would see about a $37 increase in the city's portion of their taxes over the course of the year. We really can't predict for any given property what the impact will be, simply because you have to know what the revaluation results were to be able to estimate. It is always important to remember that the City of Platteville is only about a third of a residence tax bill. The remainder of it is shared by Platteville Schools, which is the largest portion, Grant County, and Southwest Technical College. Every year, we also show a slide about how Platteville compares, and we take a look at our mill rate, our equalized mill rate, which is the best apples-to-apples comparison we have with respect to our benchmark cities. And these are cities that we use consistently. We don't vary them to find ones that are specifically good examples, but these are similarities that have some, cities that have some similar characteristics in terms of size, being in a rural area, and/or hosting UW campus. And so you can see, when you look at Platteville, relative to similar rural, rural micropolitans, we do actually compare fairly well in terms of our overall mill rate. And this is the latest data that we happen to have, so this does not include this year's data. We also happen to find some data that was extended, that somebody had collected in a file that actually showed the overall assessed tax rate for our, our community, and if you look at this, the green is the total overall tax rates. That's going to include the City of Platteville and Platteville Schools, but could also, also includes Grant Counties and other taxing jurisdictions. And then you see in red, the city's tax rate, and in blue, the school district's tax rate. So you can see that certainly the overall tax rate is down from a peak that looks to be in about 2003, and things have flattened out considerably. So just a quick word about our tax increment districts. So we do have our tax increment district results in, and so if you look at District 4, which is our old, what we call our old industrial park, we did see our value go up there by 3%. In District 5, which is the Walmart Menards Keystone Development, it was an increase of 7%, although I would note that that followed a decrease of 7% last year, largely due to Walmart challenging their assessment. Walmart has again challenged their assessment, and that will go to court, so this number could change. TID 6 is the new industrial park, sort of up towards the hospital, a positive increase there of 5%. And then in 7, which is the downtown area, the value increased by 30%, which was largely as a result of the library block project being completed. So when you look at the budgets for these districts, TID 4 had a negative number in terms of the budget this year, but it has a fund balance, and is, and we will just draw from that fund balance, and that TID is expected to close in the black. TID 5 generated a fair amount of revenue, had considerably less expenses for about a $600,000 difference. That money was transferred to 7 to help 7 cover its budget, 5 as a donor to TID 7. So both TID 5 and TID 7 are looking good. TID 6 is the one that we've been closely monitoring. That's the one that's going to have escalating debt in the next few years, and this year we had a transfer of close to $50,000 in terms of the city's support for that TID. Again, the dark store tax issue is something we're closely monitoring. I mentioned Walmart earlier. We're deeply appreciative to the voters in Grant County for passing the advisory referendum that that loophole be closed, and if anybody's interested in more information, they can go on to the League of Wisconsin municipalities website and find a lot of information about what this is and how it impacts both small businesses and residential taxpayers. And with that, I can take any questions.
Any questions from the council? All right.
I, I know it always seems weird that nobody has any questions on such a complex document, but then again, we've been working on this document for three or four months, so while there are no questions, there have been questions.
And Nicola, can you answer any questions you may have about the modest changes that have been made since you last saw the budget?
Thank you. Excuse me. So for the public hearing, well, we start with a staff presentation, the applicant statement, there is no applicant as such, this is a public hearing for the budget. Next would be public statements in favor, anyone who wanted to speak in favor of this proposed budget, or public statements against, or public statements in general. And seeing no one. Next would be council discussion, any other comments from the council regarding the budget that's being presented this evening? Then is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Just a, I have a question before that.
Yes.
So when we close the, is this a public hearing on both resolutions, 1824 and 1825?
That's correct, and then we will require two separate motions to approve number one and number two.
Okay.
All right, so is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
A second.
Motion in a second, and we'll vote.
Robin Klein.
Yes.
Don Francis is excused. Barb Stockhausen.
Yes.
Ken Killian.
Yes.
Eileen Nichols.
Yes.
Sina Sharp.
Yes.
Barb Doss.
Yes.
So is there a motion for Resolution 1824?
I move to adopt Resolution 1824 appropriating the necessary funds for the operation and administration of the City of Platteville for the year 2019 in the amount of $15,535,600 as presented.
A second.
Motion in a second, and we'll vote.
Klein.
Yes.
Francis is excused. Stockhausen.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Sharp.
Yes.
Doss.
Yes.
The second item in our packet was the Resolution 1825. Is there a motion in that resolution? It's authorizing the salaries and rates of pay for the officers and permanent employees.
I move we adopt Resolution 1825, authorizing the salaries and rates of pay for employees for the year 2019 as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second, and we'll vote on that.
Klein.
Yes.
Francis excused. Stockhausen.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Sharp.
Yes.
Doss.
Yes.
So the second public hearing is Resolution 1826, a conditional use permit for 755 Lancaster Street, and Joe Carroll is not here this evening, but I understand that Karen will be presenting.
I'll do my best. Always a poor substitute for Mr. Carroll. So the applicant in this case owns and resides in a single-family home at 755 Lancaster Street, and they operate a real estate business at that location, which is an allowed home occupation under the zoning ordinance. As part of the business, the applicant would like to install a 3x4 freestanding sign adjacent to the driveway along the street frontage of the property, and staff has recommended the request to allow the home occupation signage, as did the planning commission, and I believe the applicant is here tonight if you have any questions for her.
All right, any questions for staff at this point? Applicant statement, you don't have to make a statement, okay? You could if you wanted to, all right? And again, any public statements in favor? Public statements against, or public statements in general? Counsel discussion. This was presented, by the way, for the information of people in the audience, as information and discussion at our last meeting, so we've had some discussion about this already, but just in case anybody else has any more questions. Hearing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move.
Second.
There will be a motion in a second, and we'll vote.
Klein.
Yes.
Francis excused. Stockhausen.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Sharp.
Yes.
Doss.
Yes.
Common Council action on Resolution 1826, a conditional use permit.
I move that we approve a conditional use permit to allow a 3-foot-by-4-foot freestanding sign for the home occupation real estate business at 755 Lancaster Street.
A second.
There will be a motion in a second, and we'll vote.
Klein.
Yes.
Francis excused. Stockhausen.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Sharp.
Yes.
Doss.
Yes.
All right, that concludes our public hearings. Next is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved in a single motion and vote due to the routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer, prefer a separate discussion and action. First is council minutes from our November 13 regular meeting. B is payment of bills. C is appointments to boards and commissions, and the one appointment I had this evening is Dennis Cooley to the plan commission. D is licenses, temporary Class B to sell fermented malt beverages to the Platteville Main Street program on Wednesday, November 28, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. for the monthly mingle. Also in the packet is one-year and two-year operator licenses to sell or serve alcohol, and also taxi and taxi drivers licenses. Is there a motion on the consent calendar?
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Second.
There will be a motion in a second, and we'll vote.
Klein.
Yes.
Francis is excused. Stockhausen.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Sharp.
Yes.
Doss. Dos?
Yes.
Next is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. Please limit your comments to no more than five minutes. I apologize. I should have said that if you wanted to say anything, there's a small slip of paper on that table back there. When you came in, you could put your name and what you wanted to talk about. We would invite you to make your comments at this time.
I want to announce that the museum has their annual holiday activity on December 15. And the Mount Hora, no, pardon me, Mineral Point Cornish Men's Choir is going to sing. And after they finish singing around the tree, they're going down into the mine to sing. And then the Platteville Chorale will also be singing on that day. It's at 4:00 till about 7:00 on December 15.
Any other announcements? All right. We'll go on to the reports that are in our packet. Boards, Commissions, and Committee Minutes. Parks, Forestry, and Recreation Committee. Don Francis, he is excused for the evening. Police and Fire Commission, also Francis. Housing Authority Board, Killian?
No addition.
And Library Board, Klein.
I just wanted to point out that they have a formal volunteer link on the website. So if anyone's interested in volunteering at the library, they can go in and get their name on their list.
Airport Commission, Dos?
Nothing in there, but I do want to report that I heard from our commission chair, Bill Closter, today that the state has agreed to fund 80% of the full cost of the fuel farm that we're putting in. So that fuel farm is at a cost of $615,000. The cost to the airport will be $123,000. So that was good news for us as we're moving the fuel tanks from below-ground to above-ground tanks. As part of that project, but not exact, as an associate of that project, we've been doing an environmental inspection around the tanks that are currently underground. And our inspector issued a preliminary report today that he did not find any contamination. That's a good thing. We look to having the official report and the results in writing next week. So those are good news items for the airport.
That is good news. All right. Platteville Public Transportation Committee, Dos. And Community Safe Routes, again, committee, which would be Francis. Okay. Our first action item, Ordinance 1813, speed limit on East Mineral Street. Howard?
Yes, thank you. We received a request to review the speed limit on Mineral Street, specifically for pedestrian safety. We reviewed the situation, and staff agrees that 15 is an appropriate speed based on the narrow street parking, other congestion, plus it makes sense based on the posted speed limit. For consistency, we believe that it should be applied from Water Street to Bonson Street. There should be a study of the actual traffic speeds to ensure that the reduction is consistent with state and engineering guidelines. We do have a student group, a pair of students, who are doing speed studies. The studies are incomplete right now, but the preliminary results seem to indicate that a 15 mile an hour speed limit is appropriate. So if the council wishes to take action now, we do have an enclosed ordinance to reduce the speed limit from 25 to 15 miles per hour.
Questions, anyone?
Are you requesting this even though your speed studies aren't finished yet? Say yes.
I think we could, yes. I think we can.
Well, I move to approve Ordinance 18-13, reducing the speed limit on East Mineral Street between North Water Street and North Bonson Street from 25 miles an hour to 15 miles per hour.
A second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? We'll vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis excused. Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Next is local historic designation for 280 Division Street.
The owners of the property at 280 Division Street have applied to have their property designated as a local historic structure. A local historic structure means any improvement which has special character or special historic interest or value as part of the development, heritage, or cultural characteristics of the city of Platteville, nation, or state. If approved, the owner can't reconstruct, alter, or demolish all or any part of the exterior of the property or construct any improvement on the property unless a certificate of appropriateness has been approved by the Historic Preservation Commission. Demolition of a locally-designated structure would also require the approval of the plan commission and council. The Historic Preservation Commission has recommended approval of the designation, and staff also recommends approval.
Questions, anyone, or comments?
Does the tax, like the property tax, change at all for the building, whether or not it's a historical building or not? Is there any difference on the tax, like property taxes?
No.
Change? No. Okay.
It may make it easier to get tax credits if they wanted to do some sort of work on the property.
Okay.
Is there a motion for approval?
I move to approve the designation of the House at 280 Division Street as a local historic structure.
And I think this was just on for information.
No, it was on information last time.
Oh, it was. Okay. I'm sorry.
A second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve 280 Division Street for the local historic designation, and we'll vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
And then information and discussion item, a conditional use permit for 55 South Court Street.
This was the one that was on for information. So as you're aware, we recently sold the senior center, our former senior center, to, let's see if I can find, RJ AJ Properties. And they have a tenant, which is Word of Life Church, which is currently located in Dubuque, Iowa, but wants to open a campus in Platteville. And so they are looking to lease the building at 55 Court Street to the church until they're able to find a more permanent home. The anticipated initial congregation in Platteville is approximately 40 adults plus children. The building would be used for Sunday morning church service as well as some days during the week for music practice, meetings, fellowship, and outreach activities. The property has four parking spaces on site, but of course, there's additional parking available in the Pine Street lot. Staff recommends approval of the request to allow the church as a conditional use. The plan commission will consider this request at their December 3 meeting.
They want to have questions on the information. All right, then. The plan commission will take it up December 3, and it'll come back to us our first meeting in December. So that concludes our televised portion. We will have a work session on the art hall update. Thank you all for coming.